All these meetings order and ask that you please rise with invocation and pledge of allegiance from the honorable Ms. Caroline Henigan.
Father, thank you for these community members who have come out today and both caring concerns with the city they live in. Father, I pray I'll live up to you, the three council members being a senior today, that they be guided by their own experience as they go about the next three years making decisions for the community. God our deliberations today and be with us and continue as the city of Orange. Thank you, your son, Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Amen. In the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that sounds good. I like that. Man, that was a good national pledge of allegiance. You got some support today. All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Henigan, and we will move on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items, the confines and the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
And Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
A motion passes. Onto item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. This time, the name that I have on the list is Fahim Kuwaja. Please come forward, state your name and address to me in three minutes.
My name is Fahim Kuwaja, and I am on 61065th Street, the business owner, and I would like to thank the council for giving me an opportunity for speaking on behalf of all the business owners who are present. Today, I wanted to bring to the attention of council members regarding the hearing audience that we have on at the close session today. We have been talking about the proposed plan that the city is considering for the hearing audience in view of the court decision that was thought by Fort Worth County, like some cases that propose that these are constitutionally hearings. I just want you all to consider few things. Number one, that decision did not come from the Supreme Court. We strongly believe the Supreme Court denied the petition to listen. It did not refuse the petition to listen, refuse to listen to the petition. These both things have legal terminologies, they both are different from each other. When the Supreme Court denies something, it means the decision has not been made on the merit and it is not binding from the Supreme Court. When it refuses to hear, then that decision is on the merit and is binding from the Supreme Court. So again, I want you all to consider that that decision does not binding on us here in Orange. Second, we are a small city, and there's one more point, I forgot the fact of the time, that the state of Texas has given the licenses to all these business owners. I spoke to some officials, and I was told that that's between us and the state. No, sir. The state, we are part of state. We are a small city, and we are part of state. If the state is allowing us, giving us licenses, then state, either state is going against the ruling of the Supreme Court if we consider that it came from the Supreme Court. The state knows that it did not come from the Supreme Court. That's why it's giving us licenses to operate those sites. I again request you all to consider this with open mind. Please take our comments, our observations, our reservations into considerations as well, because we are equal stakeholders. There was one more point I wanted to bring if I had time, that other big cities, they are also considering the same ordinances, but they haven't come up with any such ordinance that we are thinking to impose. We both, we own the city, city owns us. We believe the city is our guardian, we all are our guardians. I propose the suggestion that let's wait on it, watch what other big cities are doing, let them pick their fights, let them sort it out. We don't go into that thing, we don't go into little things. We don't go spend our money, our resources on taking or utilization that these things, or business, we don't make our business owners to go to the courts and spend their money. We already made them spend money, we already brought one ordinance, we made them spend thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars to modify their buildings not too long ago, one year ago. And after modifying those buildings, I would suggest and request the council to consider on waiting it out. Let's see what the big cities do. Let them pick their fights, let them sort it out, and we just wait and watch. Save our resources, both city and to business owners, and wait for state, wait for other cities, and then decide something that is appropriate. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council this time? If not, we will then close citizen comments and move to item five, canvass results of the May 3, 2025 general election. Item five eight, appoint the committee of two city council members to canvass the returns of the general election held in the city of Orange, Texas on the third day of May, 2025. Committee members will be canvassed returns inside Orange Library. Citizens may attend the canvass. At this time, I would like to ask if Ms. Henigan and Ms. Salter would take part in canvassing the electoral vote, please. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, they will head over to the library. They will pull out the advocates and all the other commentators to add up the numbers, and then once they confirm those numbers, we will resume, so feel free, you can talk amongst yourselves, or pray whatever you want to do.
Mary, this is usually when you tell us some of your stories about your athletic career.
No, my sports career was trash, so we don't give a shit. Nobody wants to hear them sideline stories.
Who throws that discus further?
Okay, we will now reconvene. Ms. Salter, did the numbers meet your satisfaction?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Henigan?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we will now move on to this, is a lot of reading, and then also followed up when we do the swearing in of any council members, please know that this is their special day, so we will allow them all the time that they need to take photos and family pictures, because it's special. Returning their life over to the city for three dollars a day, so, something like that. Yeah, I get six, six dollars a day. All right, here we go. A resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Orange, Texas on the third day of May, 2025. Whereas there was held in the city of Orange, Texas on the third day of May, 2025, a general election at which were submitted to the duly qualified resident electors of said city, the following candidates for city offices, and it was found after being officially canvassed that the votes were cast as follows to which. Results of general election held May 3, 2025, place two, single member district number two, total votes Brad Childs with 206. Place four, single member district number four, total votes Alan Messiker with 38, Mary McKenna with 96, and also place five at large, total votes George Mortimer 350, Regro Broussard 236. The total ballots that were cast were 595, and whereas a total of 595 ballots were cast in said election, and whereas Brad Childs received the majority of the votes for place two, single member district two, Mary McKenna received the majority of the votes for place four, single member district four, and George Mortimer received the majority of the votes for place five at large, and whereas said election was duly called and noticed thereof given in accordance with law, only duly qualified resident electors of said city voted at said election. The election was held in the manner required by law. Returns of the election have been canvassed by the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, now therefore being resolved by the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, that a major, majority of voters elected Brad Childs as council member for place two, single member district two, Mary McKenna as council member for place four, single member district four, and George Mortimer as council member for place five at large. And it appears to the city council that Brad Childs, Mary McKenna, and George Mortimer are qualified under the charter of the city of Orange, Texas, to hold office and hereby declared to be elected to such office. In the event any provision of this election resolution is inconsistent with provisions of the Texas Election Code pertaining to municipal actions or being complete, the provisions of the Election Code of the State of Texas shall apply, as approved and adopted on this 20, the 13th day of May, 2025. Congratulations. Okay, and so now we move to consider a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Orange, Texas on the third day of May, 2025. Read resolution in its entirety, which we just did. At this time, do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
And Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Okay, so now we move on to conduct the ceremonies, but before we do that, before we have changing of the guard, I just want to take a moment to thank Ms. Henigan for your years of service. You've done an exemplary job as always, the way that you teach the children, the way that you talk and share information with the community. I remember when people didn't even realize that we were three different cities, they thought we were responsible for everything. And so with us sharing all of that over the years, with you loving the community and giving back in so many ways, I just want to say thank you. I was honored to sit by you when you were over there and when you were right here. I'm gonna put George over there, though, and I'm Joe, Joe. And I just want to say thank you so much for everything. If there's anyone else that would like to say something, Ms. Henigan, before we do the ceremony?
I would, Caroline and I traditionally work long together every year. Our election will come up at the same time, and I really wish you this year. I'm sure I will wish you us a year as well, one. We have frequently sat on my side through many a time, good news and bad news for the city, and you have been a delight through all of it. I just want to thank you for being here for us.
I want to say to what Mary just said, and I was gonna pleasure, because we can see each other once in a while, to get to know the council member next year. You've been a very powerful force in the last few months. You've helped the Lions, with a honor, will keep us successful, and so, your mission.
I want to just say thank you for your service.
And I can, thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you, and we will now move to conduct the ceremonies. So council member place two, single member district two, Mr. Brad Childs with the certificate of election. So, certificate of election, in the name and by the authority of the city of Orange, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on May 3, 2025, Brad Childs was duly elected, council member for place two, single member district two. In testimony whereof, I appear to sign my name and cause the seal of the city of Orange, Texas to be affixed, this, the 13th day of May, 2025. Congratulations, Mr. Childs. And so now we will come down front. I know this child's... Also, we want to recognize the honorable Judge Beardy, who is here to join us today to conduct this ceremony. Thank you, Judge Beardy.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Brad Childs...
I, Brad Childs.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of council member place two...
Of council member place two.
Single member district two...
Single member district two.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God. Thank you.
Okay, so congratulations once again, Mr. Childs. For those who don't know, Brad is definitely a, he's the man. He's never had an opponent, because people know better. It ain't happening. They know better. Don't step to Mr. Childs. Well, thank you for your work and your service. Congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, next we have council member place four, single member district four, Mary McKenna, certificate of election. So for the certificate of election, in the name and by the authority of the city of Orange, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on May 3, 2025, this Mary McKenna was duly elected, council member for place four, single member district four. In testimony whereof, I appear to sign my name and cause the seal of the city of Orange, Texas to be affixed, this, the 13th day of May, 2025. Congratulations.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Mary McKenna...
I, Mary McKenna.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of council member place four...
Of council member place four.
Single member district four...
Single member district four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, sir.
All right, and thank you also, congratulations to Ms. McKenna. Great job as always, and look forward to working with you again. Okay, last but not least, we have council member place five at large, Mr. George Mortimer. So for the certificate of election, in the name and by the authority of the city of Orange, Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on May 3, 2025, Mr. George Mortimer was duly elected, council member for place five at large. In testimony whereof, I appear to sign my name and cause the seal of the city of Orange, Texas to be affixed, this, the 13th day of May, 2025. Congratulations.
Okay, could you please put pressure right now? In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, George Mortimer...
I, George Mortimer.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of council member place five...
Of council member place five.
At large...
At large.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
No, um, they appointed me to the board, for the political science staff. Yeah, oh. Yeah, oh. Actually, no, he'll have another semester. He's actually leaving to go to, uh, he's going to be an airline pilot, and he's leaving his school to go to Dallas.
Okay, we had the broom, don't say it, he said he's from Joseph.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Oh, sure.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, there's not too many people with that name. I think there's three total in the world.
Once again, congratulations to Mr. Brad Childs, to Ms. Mary McKenna, and Mr. George Mortimer. Congratulations. Okay, we will move to Item 7, City Announcements, City Staff Announcements, and City Events. We got a good one starting with.
Good morning, Mayor McKenna. Uh, last week, we had to postpone our kickoff of the picnic pavilion event for the weather. So it'll actually start tomorrow, Wednesday. Uh, every Wednesday from 11:00 to 2:00 at the Riverfront Warlock Pavilion Pavilion downtown Orange. Uh, each week will feature a rotating lineup of food trucks. Uh, so come hungry and ready to try something new. So this Wednesday will be Wing Junkies and Old West Smoke coming. And then Grandma Lomette will be out there playing a guitar. So you can relax and enjoy your lunch by the river. So we hope to see you all again tomorrow.
All right, thank you. All right, and now we'll move on to Proclamations. We've had quite a few. So we will start with the Building Safety Month. I see we have some wonderful team members here to be a part of this. Thank y'all. Proclamation from Office of the Mayor, City of Orange, whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety in essential roles played by our homes, buildings, and infrastructure daily, and when disasters occur. And whereas our confidence and resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, such as building officials, building inspectors, code enforcement officers, fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others who work constantly to ensure the safe construction and maintenance of buildings and structures. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials, who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards to protect us in the buildings and structures where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards, such as hurricanes, tornadoes, fires, and floods experienced by the City of Orange. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our building officials, building inspectors, code enforcement officers, and fire officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings and structures that are essential to the public health, safety, land welfare, and whereas game on is the theme for Building Safety Month 2025, encouraging all of us to get involved and raise awareness about building and structural safety on a personal, local, state, tribal, territorial, national, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improving building and structural safety, resilience, and economic investment in their homes and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by building officials, building inspectors, fire department officials, and code enforcement officials in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I'm Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Orange, to hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Building Safety Month, and encourage all citizens to become aware of the need for building and structural codes, processes, and officials. Congratulations.
Council Mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
That's all that matters. All right, we have Mr. Benoit and Mr. Holman coming down. Before I give this to them and take this picture, I just want to recognize you amongst any of your other colleagues uh, for all that you do. A lot of times, people don't understand the process in keeping our community clean, trying to clean it up. We've been able to tear down over 250 homes through Mr. Keltonoff's Department. We've been able to clean up and modify so much. We just went through a complete code restructure where we've updated ourselves several years. And so with your expertise and knowledge, we're very thankful for you, because none of us know what any of that's about. So, thank you for all that you do, and congratulations.
Mayor and Council, we want to thank you for the recognition. Uh, basically, it's our job, and we try to do the best of our ability to keep everything reasonably safe. You know, we're trying to make sure that the house you buy, the new home is completely safe for you to live in. We want to make sure that it's economically affordable for you to pay the utilities of the new house. Uh, our biggest challenge I'll pay here in the city is investment properties. Uh, folks come in and want to hurry up, pitch up a house, and try to put it out for lease or rent. Uh, we spend a lot of time with people, tenants, uh, trying to get their house up to speed and make sure that they have a good place to live. So, we do want to thank you, and uh, we're out there trying to do the best we can. Appreciate your recognition.
Thank you.
First of all, thank the man himself for this opportunity. But I really wanted to thank the City of Orange. I want to thank my director, Mr. Kevin Keltonoff, my building official, Mr. Martin Benoit, Mr. Mike Coons. You know, a couple of years ago, I came to the city to support Orange and raise. I was dreaming about coming back home and doing the type of work that I'm doing here. So I want to thank my fellow coworkers, because without them, this makes this job really easy for me today, because they have a family. A family that I always wanted. The City of Orange, thank Mr. Martin Benoit and Kevin Keltonoff.
Thank you.
Thank y'all both, and thank you to everyone involved, the team members that aren't here. Uh, we are very appreciative. Orange is a little over 180-something years old, and there's things that we have to continue to work on that goes on behind the scenes that people don't know about. So thank you all for that. Okay, next we have Economic Development Week. Proclamation, so whereas more than 100,000 economic development or related professionals worldwide are dedicated to creating, retaining, and expanding opportunities that promote long-term equitable community growth. And whereas the economic development profession fosters thriving communities, supports sustainability and resilience, drives economic prosperity, enhances quality of life, and builds robust tax bases. And whereas economic development professionals work across rural, suburban, and urban areas serving governments, public, private partnerships, chambers of commerce, and educational institutions. And whereas economic developers serve as stewards, building vital connections among residents, businesses, elected officials, industry executives, and educators to drive job creation, community investment, and infrastructure improvements, and an optimistic future. And whereas since 1926, the International Economic Development Council has been a leader and driving force in advancing economic development initiatives with a steadfast commitment to fostering growth and prosperity in communities of all sizes worldwide through equity, inclusion, sustainability, resilience, and innovation. Now therefore, I'm Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, to hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through the 16th, 2025, as Economic Development Week in the City of Orange, Texas. Congratulations. So definitely want to recognize this group. I know they don't, they don't like attention. We love you, JT.
Yeah, they steal your respect.
JT money. But no, this group does a wonderful job. Even though you catch all kinds of hail for three water breakers that we had nothing to do with, we appreciate you, and so thank you for continuing to help this growth community. Just one more water break. All right, and we have, ooh, Veteran Stand Down Day. I know we have some representatives here with us. Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, whereas the Southeast Texas Stand Down Committee in partnership with the 501(c)(3) nonprofit veteran organization, Southeast Texas Veterans for Veterans. I'm sorry. Let me stand for these veterans. Will hold a Southeast Texas Stand Down for homeless veterans, veterans their families, and others in need. And whereas stand down is a term used in times of war in which exhausted combat units come off the battlefield to rest and recover in a place of safety. And whereas according to the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs, the first stand down was organized in 1988 by a group of Vietnam veterans in San Diego. And whereas today, stand down also refers to a community-based program that provides and assists homeless and near homeless veterans transition to community living by providing access to human service agencies, including benefits, counseling, social security, and veterans, employment and training assistance, healthcare screenings, housing services, legal assistance, mental health treatment, and substance abuse counseling. And whereas stand downs have been used as effective tools in reaching out from hundreds Southeast Texas veterans every year experiencing homelessness, near homelessness, and their family members. And whereas the next Southeast Texas Veteran Stand Down will be held May 16th, 2025, at Orange County Convention and Expo Center in Orange, Texas. Now therefore, I'm Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, to hereby proclaim May 16th, 2025, as Veteran Stand Down Day in the City of Orange. And the City of Orange supports these stand down events as a positive way to engage our communities and their resources in assisting our local veterans and their families. Congratulations. As we present this, do we have other veterans in the room? Please stand. So that we may thank you for your service. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and staff, thank you for allowing us to be here today, and thank you for the proclamation. I always get, uh, just a little nervous when I hear oaths. The last time I did that, I went from a building in Houston to a ship in the Gulf. So, I get a little nervous. Congratulations on your oath today, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, that's a lot about what stand downs are, is recognizing service. So we're always happy to be back in Orange. Uh, we've purchased hundreds of meals for our attendees coming right here from restaurants here in Orange who want to make an economic impact wherever we go, because we can't do this without our civic partners from the city and counties that we have our stand downs in. So thank you again to the City of Orange and to the County of Orange for allowing us to, uh, host another event. And you guys are always such gracious hosts. I appreciate that very much. We want to make sure that this is for veterans and their families, right? We've heard some things that, you know, maybe I'm not experiencing homelessness right now, but that isn't for me. Well, it's not the case. Um, you know, I've been out for 11 years. I have a full-time job. Uh, but just, just this past few months, I've needed access to mental health counseling. I've needed help with my disability rating. And I have all the resources in the world, and it was extremely difficult. So, we want to make sure that every veteran has the same opportunity to be as successful as they possibly can be. And that's what these, uh, stand downs are for. I'm just a small part of a very large team of veterans and non-veterans that help put these events on. So, just wanted to give a big shout out to my friends on the committee. And again, thank you so much for allowing us to be here today, and we'll see you on Friday. Go Navy.
Thank you once again to all of our veterans for your service. We would not be where we are without you, and so I sincerely mean that. Thank you. Okay, last but not least, we have Old Orange Historic District Day. Okay, proclamation, Office of the Mayor, whereas the City of Orange, Texas, has a rich history and heritage dating from before 1828, when it was a collection of families along the west bank of the southern Sabine River, just across from the United States of America to 1836, when its residents fought along with General St. Houston, the Battle of San Jacinto, and to 1852, when it was first incorporated as a city to the present day. And whereas early citizens of Orange lived in the area between the Sabine River and Abbot's Bayou, south of the present-day courthouse, until the population grew due to lumber mills which produced millions of board feet of lumber from timber cut in the region. And whereas by the 1870s, the increase in population led to a demand for more and improved housing for citizens whose income was not derived from agriculture. This need was addressed by the establishment of the city's first subdivision when Henry Sheldon filed a plaque that created lots and blocks with streets laid out from Green Avenue, formerly Grandview Street, to Hart Avenue, and from First Street to 16th Street. And whereas Henry Sheldon's subdivision was created a safe and secure neighborhood for citizens, is typified by the Stevens home, known as Block 4 and 5, Block 57, amended Sheldon survey of 101,008 West Pine Avenue, which has recently received an historical marker from the state of Texas, recognizing the productive citizens who have lived there, including the first residents, R.E. and Missouria McFarland in the early 1880s, Carol and Edna Grubbs, J.M. Casey and the family of Ben and Martha Stevens, who collectively resided there for 78 years from 1907 to 1985. The marker recognizes Ben and Martha's son, Buck Stevens, who was raised in the home and lived there until death in 1973, as well as his wife, Sadie Woods Stevens, who was elected Orange County Clerk in 1950, where she served until she retired in 1969. She lived in the home from her marriage in 1926 until her death in 1982. This home has recently been restored by present owners, Kenneth and Beth Wheeler. Now therefore, I'm Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, on behalf of the City of Orange, to hereby proclaim Friday, May 22nd, 2025, as Old Orange Historic District Day in the City of Orange, Texas. And all citizens are called to reflect upon their heritage as citizens and the area known as the Old Orange Historic District, which has provided a home for so many productive citizens who have made the city what it is today. Congratulations. Thank you so much for y'all's work and kind of vision.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing this to take place. And, uh, just want to make a quick comment about our house. Our house is a result of the Orange Historical Preservation Committee. Uh, it was posed to be torn down just prior to us purchasing it. It was going to be made into a parking lot. So, you know, there was enough roadblocks put in place for, uh, through the, uh, at that time, the, uh, City Historical Preservation Committee threw those roadblocks in, and then getting over market, and that's when we purchased it and started restoration of it. Of course, we took, uh, three hurricanes to get through it, but it was a challenge. So, that being said, uh, one correction I would like to make, that is, our dedication is going to be, again, May 22nd, which is on a Thursday. A little error on the proclamation, but, uh, this, I think that was my fault.
No, it's okay.
So, but, uh, again, thank you. I appreciate that, and, uh, invite everyone here to come to the dedication on May 22nd, at 10:30 in the morning, which is on a Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. And then again, Mr. and Mrs. Wheeler, I know y'all hosted Toy Coffee last year, and, uh, the downtown area was packed, so thank you for that. Thank you for serving. Okay, we have now, we move to Item 9, Consent Agenda, April 8th, 2025, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes, and April 22nd, 2025, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Perch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
There you go. All right, motion passes. Okay, on to Item 10A. Consider Resolution Improving an EDC Infrastructure Grant Agreement with Childs Manufacturing and Building Supply, Inc., 3704 North 16th Street, Orange, Texas, 77632. Pay incentive is in an amount not to exceed $50,000 to construct a text dog curb cut. First reading was April 22nd, 2025. Mr. Treyhan? Thank you, Mr. Childs. Mr. Childs has formally recused himself.
Yes, so Mayor, uh, great news in terms of, uh, Brad and his team working through the. the Tex-Top curb stuff, permitting process. And I always want to acknowledge our Public Works Director, Adam Jack, who was instrumental in terms of persistence and patience in working with Brad as a project owner and working with Tex-Top to get this permit. Great news is, and the equipment is mobilized now. It's very obvious work is begun and the project's underway. So this is the final reading in terms of the additional fifty thousand for the project, of which Brad and his team have been contributing.
Okay, at this time, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Treyhan. Item ten B. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Texas Bending Solutions at sixty-nineteen North Highway Seven, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two, in an amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred. Ms. Bradley?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So the Texas Bending Solutions was previously brought to the EDC meeting just prior to the council meeting. So their total workforce was seven thousand five hundred dollars, and it's looking towards construction and facility infrastructure costs. So this has previously been approved. We have met our sixty-year waiting period, and now we are bringing the agreement. But for you, we're brutal.
Okay, you have any questions or comments from Ms. Bradley? I will say that I'm actually excited about this. A lot of times people think that the EDC is strictly about major business and things of that nature coming to our city. But to have local investors and entrepreneurs who are wanting to do something, I'm very excited to see that. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item ten C. Consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing a one-time payment to the general government employees of the City of Orange for enhancement of their individual work, clothing, uniform, and/or personal protection equipment as is consistent with requirements of their jobs. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, Council, good morning. As y'all recall, in the couple of months passed, we've received an unbudgeted payment from one of our IDA partners, if you will, in Vista. As a result of that, and the result of the collective bargaining agreement with Fire Fighters Association, we did reopen that for wages. They were offered some additional wages. Result of that, we gave some, did a retention pay for the members of the Police Association. There was, as a result of that, some of the council members suggested they were interested in doing something for the general government employees. So with that, we came up with the, this resolution that would allow those employees to get a payment for individually work-type clothes. It has to be something that is consistent, again, with the requirements of their individual job, being uniforms, personalized protection equipment, those types of things.
I do have any questions for Mr. Coons?
I do, I have something to say. I want to explain my stance on Resolution ten C. While I wholeheartedly support the departments where employees wear uniforms, such as our fire department, water department, utilities, and police department, I cannot support this resolution in its entirety. These are the men and women that we consider our boots on the ground, and ensuring that they have proper uniform allowances is a priority. City employees already receive a cost of living raise annually to help offset expenses they may face. Asking taxpayers to fund an additional fifteen hundred dollars per employee is not something that I can justify. As elected representatives, our duty is to be responsible stewards of taxpayers' dollars. On February eighteenth, you, Coons, originally proposed a five hundred dollar uniform allowance per employee, totaling approximately a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The wording clearly stated that this was for increasing uniform allowances across departments. Today, I notice the wording has slightly changed. Today, we are faced with a request for fifteen hundred dollars per employee, a significant jump to approximately over two hundred thousand dollars. I cannot support this measure unless it is strictly designated for employees who wear uniforms. Other employees can use their cost of living raise to purchase the necessary attire for their roles. Fiscal responsibility must remain our guiding principle. So I cannot support that in its entirety. I do support our uniform departments, but that is my stance. And we have, we have so much to do, and we are supposed to be good stewards of this money, of the taxpayer's money. And so that is my stance, and I will stand on it.
Thank you, Ms. Salter. Does anybody else have a question or comment?
Comments I have, once again, as a new member, I was not subject to all conversations. However, I just want to know that I stand behind all the employees, and I have to defer, once again, to administration at this particular time, that they're making some decisions. However, I also deserve the opportunity to have those types of conversations always in the future, because there are those concerns I carry at the same time. So I just want to make sure I'm always there.
Yeah, I have the same concern. As a council member, we're supposed to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. This was kind of thrown quickly at us. The numbers were changing, the wording was changing. But at the same time, we're supposed to be good employees to our staff and our team. We have a wonderful staff and team. We need to help them when we can.
Right.
I, I think this whole item should have been more in discussion for just his. We did have power presentation, but those numbers have completely changed. I'd like to take away from employees. I love employees, but I think next year, we need to go in this with a different approach. You know, we have to do workshops. We, this council doesn't do workshops, and we need workshops where we can discuss in depth what we're fixing to do.
Okay, anyone else?
I will say I totally agree.
Okay. All right, so I will say this. Thank you for your comments. What has happened is, when the police and the fire came and requesting more as an incentive, because of the restrictions that we have on us as far as paperwork, it has to be worded in a way that signifies for clothing and uniforms. This was a way, which Ms. Innigan asked us in our last meeting, how do we help and bless the regular team members who aren't firing police? It has to be worded this way in order for it to meet the, in compliance with the way that our city government works. This bonus was, I mean, I know I'm probably not supposed to say it, but oh well, it was a bonus. It's a bonus to help them say, "Thank you for your hard work." At this time, it had to say clothing and uniforms. If we have to have another meeting next time to clarify that, then we will. But this was a bonus to say, "Thank you for your work." No one's fixing to go walk in their closet and say, "Let me see your clothes." No one's fixing to do that. So it was a chance to give back to them in the way that we gave back to those who actually have a union that represents them. The regular workers, team members, they don't have a union. So this was not an attempt to distract or like try to do something illegal. It was a way of trying to say, "Thank you for your work." But whatever we need to do in the future, Mr. Coons, to make sure that if we have to change a line item so that it is worded differently, we are good stewards of the taxpayer's money. This was the money that came after the Invisa decided to continue their payment. And as the one point three million that we received extra, we were wanting to bless all team members, fire, police, streets, drainage, and everything. So that's really what this was about. I do understand your concern, and I take everyone's opinion into consideration. And so I see you having it up.
Yes, and with all due respect, I understand, and thank you for explaining that. But here's my, my issue with that, talking about the bonus. We do give them a cost of living raise every year, okay, for extra expenses. And me myself, and I'm sure other people on jobs, we get thank yous, you know? And so to go from five hundred dollars, okay, we're thanking them. Now it's fifteen hundred dollars. How can you justify that? I mean, so I, I do have an issue. And, and when you are doing a job, sometime a thank you is a, you just have to do a thank you. And you can't always additionally give. We have other things that constituents are needing for us to do. We have streets and things that are needing to be repaired. And so I understand that, but they, you know, to say, "Thank you." Thank you from the mayor. Thank you from the city manager. Thank you. But we have things that we need to do, and our constituents are first. They are getting a paycheck. They are getting a cost of living raise. And so we just need to be careful with the taxpayer's money.
Thank you for your opinion. I will, I will come after you once again and say that I, I do agree that we need to be great constituents. We have had several meetings talking about the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, the streets, the drainage, the infrastructure, and all those things come from a separate account. They do not come from this account. So this, this money would not necessarily have went to a street anyway. And if you, if you break it down, I understand, I'm not, I'm not coming against you. I just don't want anyone who doesn't understand how government works to take this and think that we're just blowing money. This pretty much just provided each employee with a hundred and fifty dollars a month. That's what that is. So we're saying, "Thank you," with an extra one hundred and fifty dollars a month. Fifteen hundred sounds huge, but one hundred and fifty dollars a month for all of their hard work, ninety-nine degrees. It was, what was it, twenty degrees, and they were standing that deep in water fixing plumbing lines? That's all that this was about. I respect your opinion. I respect everybody's opinion. I just, as mayor, I want to make sure that everything that we have spoken about in meetings, whether people were in attendance or not, this has been talked about on some level, and maybe not as deep as we need to next time. But I don't want taxpayers to think that we are not. We receive a green A-plus-plus rating every year for through finance, audits, and things of that nature. So we're definitely working on your behalf. This was just an attempt to say, "Thank you" to those. And so if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. It's no problem. I understand, I respect everybody. I just love sharing the parts that I, that I know.
Just one more, one more quick comment. I, I will say this, that our city staff and all of the local officials had to go through some, some very, very difficult and tough times. And with, between COVID and then after COVID coming through and the economy, the loss of some of the businesses that we had here, revenues that came in while inflation was running at seven, seven and a half percent, we were to a point where we were at two, two and a half percent. So from that standpoint, I think this is an opportunity. Once again, I like some of the worry, not necessarily. I like what you asked me personally, necessarily. I think we need to have more conversations about things in the future, absolutely. But anyway, I just want to say thank you. Just got to that one, what you said.
And I just want to say, I don't want the employees to think that I'm against them getting anything, because I am supporting those that do receive a uniform. It's just if, if, if for us to, to have to, if, if you have to work, rework something in order for somebody to actually obtain something, then that's an issue for me, you know? And that means we can't get it. That means that it's out of the question for what we need to do. So.
That's fine. I just know that we make variances all the time, but that's fine. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion?
I want to add the point, this is a very delicate balance between the taxpayer and the employee.
Yeah. We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter? Okay, Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Motion passes. Once again, this is how government works. We don't always have to agree, but as you can see, it was respectful. And we move on to the next item agenda. Item ten B. Consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the city manager to sign an amendment of an interlocal agreement passed, approved, and adopted on the twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-three, with the Orange County Navigation and North District of Orange County, Texas, for the city's provision of fire protection services to include certain property recently acquired by the Port as described in the amendment. Mr. Bilbo?
Mayor, Council, good morning. So we, we have a agreement with the Port. We provide fire service for them. They picked up another piece of property down off Children's Road. Thank God it's not more marsh. It's a, one of the old small shipyards has one big building and a couple of other smaller structures on it. But they're just wanting to get that included into the fire protection agreement that we already have, that we already have in place for them.
Any questions for Chief Bilbo? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, onto item ten E. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents pertaining to the advanced funding agreement for the City of Orange's maintenance of railroad approaches off the system. Ms. Hawley?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution that will allow an agreement between the City of Orange and the Tex-Top Rail Division. This project will allow Tex-Top to install signing and strapping and pavement markings at all road approaches throughout the city. This project can be funded entirely by the Federal Highway Administration at no cost to the city. City staff, department members.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
A second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item ten E. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager, I'm sorry, ten F. Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange Economic Development Corporation to approve additional costs at the West Side Waterline Phase Two project site due to the need for additional materials in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand for the purpose of economic development. The total EDC incentive for the project is in an amount not to exceed five hundred and eighty-five thousand. Mr. Treyhan?
Yes, so Mayor, this is a continuation of this project. And the whole intention is to extend this water line to Highway eighty-seven and basically prepare that side across from the DPS office for additional retail development, once we get that power up from a water standpoint and sanitary sewer standpoint. So Adam Jack and his team have taken the lead, have met the standard for EDC funding, and so this adds to that question to be able to take care of contingency that we need for.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? I think this is a great opportunity for us to prepare for growth and to continue to establish infrastructure for the community. But that being said, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And Mr. Treyhan? Onto item ten G. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two with T. Johnson Industries for bid twenty twenty-three, pass eleven, West Side Waterline Phase Two project. Mr. Adam Jack?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This, this change order is required as part of our permit between Pacific Railroad, the West Side Waterline must pass underneath of the railroad. The railroad will change the construction technique requirements. As such, we had to incur a ninety-nine thousand dollar change order. In order to support that change order, we eliminated the future crossing end of the contract, but we still need an additional thirty-seven thousand dollars added to the contract even after that removal in order to perform the work. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Jack. Looking forward to that growth. Onto item eleven, Discussion Action. Consider a motion authorizing the following public service organizations for twenty twenty-five Community Development Block Program funding. This is a draft version. Thank you, Ms. Monson, for being here. We have Greater Orange Area Literacy Services, sixty-five hundred, Jackson Community Center, six thousand, Julie Rogers Gift of Life, four thousand, Orange Community Action Association, the Meals on Wheels Program, ten thousand, Orange Community Action Association, the Meals on Wheels Program, ten thousand, Orange Christian Services, sixty-eight hundred, Southeast Texas Hospice, eight thousand, and Stable Spirit, fifty-five seventy, total CDBG, public service recommendations is forty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Ms. Monson?
Good morning, Mayor, council.
Is this for my idea or is this for yourself on this? Just a second.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Um, although I'm very passionate about CPG, any tears you see this one or not due to allergies? Um, so our citizens advisory committee met, and the reason this is a draft version is we haven't gotten our numbers for next year yet, but because we have timelines, we have to meet with HUD, we needed to go ahead and bring this draft version up. Once our final number comes in, if there are any changes that need to be made, I will bring them back to you at that time. Um, our, our citizens advisory committee felt very passionate and listened to what you said last year about wanting to, to get Meals on Wheels back, uh, being funded more than what we had been doing. Um, they are getting to the point where they can almost have hot meals five days a week. And so we felt like upping what we gave them this year would help them maybe meet that goal. So that's why, uh, we gave them the majority or the, the highest amount of the money. So, uh, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Monson, for sharing that, that explanation. Definitely excited about seeing us being able to continue to sponsor those CDBG, CDBG, uh, programs. It's like CDBDGBBB. So, um, they actually come and they talk about the services they provide. Jackson Community Center blessing those with free tax services. And I've actually had a chance through United Way and as the mayor to go visit these facilities, I was blown away by Staples Spirit. It is so cool. If you've never been, you have to go check that out too. So, and being able to support Meals on Wheels is a, is a major, major thing, okay? So do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Monson? Okay, if not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Mortimer? Mr. Birch? Mr. Charles? Ms. Salter? Ms. McKenna? Okay, that's right. Sorry. Motion passes, Ms. Monson. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item eleven B, consider a motion approving action taken by the EDC concerning a timeline extension through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, shops of Orange at twelve fourteen North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven, seven, six, three, zero, due to construction delays. Ms. Brad?
Mr. Capol with Shops of Orange has reached out and requested a timeline extension due to some construction delays, specifically with some underground plumbing and, uh, underground drainage. So there has been a lot of progress going on on the site. We do also have an update with tenants. They have, Mr. Capol has let us know that there will be a laundromat, a salon, and a donut shop, and he does also have two spaces that are available for lease. So like I said, we, we see good progress at the site and we're excited to see you very good.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments for Ms. Brad? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second, Mr. Mortimer? Mr. Birch? Mr. Charles? Ms. Salter? Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. Consider, uh, on to item eleven C, consider a motion of pointing blank as mayor pro temp. Mr. Collins? Mr. Brad Charles? Okay, so we have a nomination for Mr. Brad Charles. Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Okay, Ms. McKenna? Okay, Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mayor, this requires four, all of our actions require four votes. We need you to vote.
Sir?
We need, all of our actions by charter require four votes in the affirmative for it to take action, so we do need you to vote.
Oh, this one to split it up, okay? I will say aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Coons. Congratulations, Mr. Charles. All right, on to city manager report.
Uh, Mayor, council, uh, as we all know, our next council meeting is May twenty-sixth. Uh, on the Monday prior to that, which is May, uh, twenty-fifth, is a city holiday and, uh, observance of Memorial Day. So please, uh, take some time out of your day to remember all those who have served in service to their, uh, to our country. And also I'd like to wish, uh, Mrs. McKenna, Ms. McKenna, happy birthday tomorrow. And if she wouldn't mind, when we get to her, uh, comment, if she can share with us what her master's degree is. It sounds very impressive. I can't remember. There's so much to it. That's all I have.
All right, city council report, starting with Ms. Salter.
Uh, I don't have any. Just thank you all for coming.
Congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations, Brad. Yeah, congratulations.
Mr. Mortimer?
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to vote in the city elections, uh, both for myself and for the public, uh, to have the opportunity to serve.
Yeah.
Mr. Charles?
I'll make, uh, Ms. Caroline again for her service. It's been a pleasure. And, uh, now I have to sit next to him, but I'll make that all day long as well. And also we have Bassmaster's coming up this weekend. Uh, we break the record every time. Uh, we need to break forty-two thousand this coming weekend. I think we can do it because this will be the first time they have ever brought the announcers to the, to the event, just like the ball game. They're bringing announcers for Bassmaster's instead of them up out there. Never before happened.
Ms. McKenna?
Uh, Happy Mother's Day to everybody. If daylight and the dark are short, Happy Mother's Day. Caroline, I will miss you deeply down here at the LBS. We are getting fewer and fewer as women, so, uh, we, we will, Carrie and I will proudly, uh, represent the women in here. And I want to thank everyone for coming. I want to thank you for allowing me to serve for the next couple of years. Thank you for voting for me. Thank you for letting me sit in this seat and do what I can do to make our city grow and be better. So, thank you.
Okay, what's your master's degree? Let me ask.
I have a master's in science and biomedical sciences from the University of Texas. My degree major is neuropsychopathology.
I have to say, so I get teed up, but I never did that.
And I have a grandson that's three years old, and every time we talk now, he goes, hook on horns, giggle, maggot, so we're good together.
All right, um, I'll close it out by saying, before we go to executive session, congratulations to everyone. Congratulations to, uh, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Charles, Mr. Mortimer. Uh, thank you for being here today. Once again, Ms. Henigan, I know you're behind Mr. KK back there. Uh, thank you so much for your service. Going to miss you, but it's orange, so I'm going to see you somewhere, right? Maybe at Chick-fil-A or something. And, uh, once again, thank you everyone for being in attendance. We will now adjourn to close the executive session. Um, section five five one point zero seven one, consultation regarding pending or contested litigation, Edward D. Gonzalez and Michelle Renee Gonzalez versus the city of Orange, and also five five one zero seven one, attorney regarding regulation of amusement redemption machines and game rooms as a result of seeking the foreword and David Cook in his official capacity as foreword city manager versus Stephanie Lynn Riley, Texas CND Amusements, and Brian and Lisa Shaw, DBA TSCA and DBA River Bottom Blood Court case. At this time, you're welcome to hang out outside or visit the library, maybe renew your library card or get one if you don't have it, and we'll reconvene shortly, or hopefully shortly.